My ladies and my lords, I appear with Mr Royston for Ms Theriann Samuels, the appellant. My learned friends, Mr Manning and Ms Leon appear for the respondent Birmingham City Council. And my learned friends, Mr Westgate of Leavenham Council and Mr Johnston appear for Shelter and the Child Poverty Action Group. And I understand that Ms Liu, who contributed to their written case, is currently in Taiwan, and that's why she's not with us today. My lords, this case, and ladies, this case concerns three points. Firstly, whether generally it is open to an authority to find that accommodation is reasonable to continue to occupy on the basis that it is affordable when the housing costs can only be met by the occupier using sums from their subsistence benefits, income support, child tax credit and child benefit in this case, to meet a gap between their housing benefit and their contractual rent. Secondly, did this local authority fail to have regard to the Code of Guidance issued by the Secretary of State, or sufficient regard to it? In particular, the first recommendation made in paragraph 1740 of that guidance, that it was recommended that local authorities should not treat accommodations affordable if it left an individual with a residual income that was below the applicable amount for the purposes of their subsistence benefits?
Well, that's not exactly what it says, of course.
That's the term I was going to come on to. That's the term that I would use.
Yes, of course.
Asking the court to find. The local authority, of course, responds, well, it only says income support, therefore we can ignore the other subsistence benefits in relation to what the guidance says, or the guidance only refers to income support. We say that the only rational meaning to be given to that part of the code is to include those benefits that have replaced the child elements of income support, namely child tax credit and child benefit. And thirdly, that the authority, when giving its decision, did not adequately provide reasons in that it did not either adequately evidence or explain the decision. Our case is simply that a figure was produced which was said to be sufficient without any reasoning being given as to how that figure was reached, other than on the basis of what the officer said, it seems to me that the figures are excessive.
Well, one and two are different sides of the same coin, are they not? And those are the points of law of general public importance.
Well, I shall obviously be concentrating on those points, my lady.
Yes, that's the hint I'm giving you.
If I can turn then to issue one, in that regard, as to whether accommodation should not as a general rule be regarded as affordable if it requires a person to make up that shortfall between housing benefit and contractual rent from other subsistence benefits. The reason we say this is not, as the Court of Appeal thought, nor as is suggested by the respondent, because we're giving those benefits some form of special status, contrary to what the suitability of accommodation order says, but because of what those benefits represent, i.e. the state's assessment of what is reasonable for someone to live on. And in doing so, if you're assessing what is reasonable for someone to live on, you're assessing what is reasonable for them to spend, i.e. what their reasonable expenses are likely to be. It may well be, as the intervenors suggest, that some measures would suggest that is in fact a significantly lower measure than others would regard, such as through the minimum income standard. But that is the rate that Parliament has set, and that is the rate that should equally be applied in relation to affordability in this context. If I can turn then to the affordability order 1996, that's in tab two, and it's MS 671. So it's tab one, sorry. Authorities one, tab two.
Sorry, MS?
671. Matters to be taken into account. And of course, there are matters to be taken into account in the context either of whether accommodation is reasonable to continue to occupy, or, although that's not the fact which we're questioning in this case, as to whether accommodation is suitable for a person in relation to the discharge of any duty to secure suitable accommodation is made available for them. And the first point that is made by the E M order is that there should be taken into account whether or not the accommodation is affordable for that person. And so that's the primary question asked of an authority. And in particular, then it says, the following matters. The financial resources available to that person, including but limited to, it sets out a list of those that are considered, including salaries, fees and other remuneration, social security benefits, payments under court orders, et cetera. Here, we're concerned only with social security. Though the Code of Guidance, when we come to look at it, for some reason refers to tax credits only under salary, fees and other remuneration, which would have applied, as I understand it, to working families' tax credit, but not to child tax credit, which is paid as a benefit.
I couldn't hear that.
Sorry, that, a working family's tax credit used to be paid through payroll, I understand, so would count some form of other remuneration. But child tax credit, although it's paid by the Her Majesty's Revenue and Customs, is paid as a benefit because it is paid to people such in the appellant's position, though of course, it is also paid...
Your point on this regulation is what?
If I can just come on to the second part of the regulation, if I may, my lord. And then the second element in relation to the regulation, so you have the resources on one side of the ledger, is the costs in respect to the accommodation, and obviously different types of costs that may arise in relation to different forms of accommodation are then set out. Then, if you have any payments to be made in relation to other court orders, or under the Child Support Act, and then that person's other reasonable living expenses. So on one side of the ledger, you have financial resources, on the other, accommodation costs, child support and other person's reasonable living expenses. Now, as I said, we don't say, because of the, and the order, of course, requires us to consider the social security benefits under the terms of financial resources, that they are to be ignored in any calculation, clearly they appear on one side of the ledger. What we say is, why we say there is nothing to be found in those to meet accommodation costs is because of what they represent, namely the state's assessment of what your reasonable living expenses are.
Minimum.
Minimum reasonable living expenses are. If we turn then from the order to, if I look at the facts of this appellant's case that are set out in the statement to facts and issues, that can be found at MS number 63, and it's paragraph 13. Her total income, including housing benefit and those other benefits, in July 2011 was eighteen hundred and eighty-seven pounds and eighty-four pence. Of that, I said, five hundred and forty-eight pounds fifty-one was housing benefit. That left her with thirteen hundred and forty-nine pounds thirty-three per month, consisting of income support of two hundred and ninety pounds thirty-three, child tax credit of eight hundred and nineteen pounds and child benefit. There was therefore a shortfall of a hundred and fifty-one pounds forty-nine per month between her contractual rent, which was seven hundred pounds, and the amount of housing benefit awarded to her of five hundred and forty-eight pounds fifty-one. She was in, apparently by the time she left, in rent arrears at between seven hundred and sixteen hundred pounds. It does not matter for our purpose exactly how much they were. So, the second issue that we say then arises in relation to that, and will arise in relation to the code, is what in fact was her applicable amount, i.e. did the amount of benefit she was receiving at that time actually reflect what had been regarded as being appropriate for her to live on? Well, her applicable amount was around fourteen hundred and fifty pounds. In the intervenor's additional documents, the witness statement of Alison Garnum, which at page 500, MS page 500, paragraph 66, page 30 of the statement, breaks down what her applicable amount would have been expected to have been. You see the table at the bottom, sixty-seven pounds fifty, and I'll look at income support and child tax credit and income support rates together, which we'll come on to later. They come out, the figures you'll see right at the bottom of the table come up very close, something like seventy pence between them. But you will see sixty-seven pounds fifty for income support, one hundred and ninety-five pounds seventy-two for child tax credit, so that's four children of that child tax element, and a family element for child tax credit. And then is over the, weekly totals included, it's total income support plus child tax credits is then set out at the bottom of that. Then over, she adds in the child benefit for the family, which would be sixty pounds fifty. And then when you add up those monthly totals, you come to fourteen hundred and forty-seven pounds ninety-eight of total child benefit. So it will be seen that, in fact, the benefits that she said she was receiving were considerably lower already than the applicable amount that she should have been receiving. It appears to be that there had been a child tax credit overpayment in the past that was being recovered, but it is not entirely clear why she had such a significant difference between the applicable amount that she should have been receiving and what she was receiving. So we say, in that regard, that it was not open to the authority to find that it was affordable accommodation at Eighteen Dagger Lane if it left a residual income of eleven hundred and eighty-seven pounds eighty-four a month for her and her four children, if the full seven hundred pounds of the rent was met.
Sorry, eleven eighty...
Seven.
Eighty-seven, thank you.
...pounds eighty-four.
Sorry, which figure are you now on?
If you recall from the statement of facts and issues, the total income figure was eighteen hundred and eighty-seven pounds eighty-four.
Yes.
So if you take away the contractual rent from that...
I see.
That gives you a residual income of eleven hundred and eighty-seven pounds eighty-four.
But I mean, the figure in the Garnum table, I mean, it's an interesting observation, but it doesn't affect the arguments, does it?
Yes, it does affect the arguments, and particularly the argument in relation to the Code of Guidance, because if, we're right about the construction of the Code of Guidance. The Code of Guidance says that you should not leave someone with a residual income that was a lower income than they were actually receiving, but a lower income than their applicable amount.
But your point is good, even on the, on the figures in the statement of facts.
Indeed, my lord, that's, that's right, because we, because even on the statement of facts, she would be left with a considerably lower income than she was actually receiving, let alone what she ought to be.
Well, I mean, the point I'm making is, do we need the complication of the Garnum table to make your point?
It's not so much a complication, my lord, I say, it's a...
But it's just new evidence, it's always easier to deal with the evidence of before the...
Well, it's an elucidation of the code, of the code point. So perhaps if it's better if I leave it, park it here now, and I'll come back to it when I deal with the, the second point in relation to the failure to comply with the code.
Can I just be sure about the figures that we're talking about? Applicable amount, one four four seven?
Ninety-eight, yes.
Well, forget the pence for the moment, one four four seven. Benefits actually received, one three four nine?
Yes.
If the shortfall in housing benefit was taken off that, I haven't just finished the figure, but minus one hundred and fifty-one?
One fifty-one forty-nine, yes, that's right.
One, one nine eight, I think.
It's one one, well, if you take off, if you, if you take off the full rent amount, that's how you, you come up with your figure as to what the residual income is, the eleven hundred and eighty-seven pounds figure, is from adding up the...
But I'm just trying to work out, if she had to pay the shortfall from what she had, you take off another hundred and fifty-one pounds from the benefits she's actually receiving, and you get to one one nine eight, I think. And that's what she then has to manage with the, for the rest of her expenditure. Well, perhaps it can come back to it.
Well, you got to a different figure, but not, only different by about ten pounds, so. I know ten pounds matters a lot when you're living at this level, but it's...
I don't, yeah, I don't mind to ten pounds, but...
Well, you said eleven eighty-seven eighty-four pence.
Yes, that's right.
So eleven eighty-eight, basically.
At some, at some point, I'd be grateful if you could assist me in relation to the figure that she gave, the final figure, as I understand it, that she gave for her actual expenses.
Her final figure she actually gave for her actual expenses? Yes, the final figures that she gave for her expenses set her up in the, in the very last income and expenditure schedule that was provided.
As I understand it, she, she provided a figure of one thousand two hundred and thirty-five pounds.
Yes, that's right. So her actual expenses are above the eleven hundred and eighty-seven pounds, or eleven hundred and ninety-eight pounds figure, by a sum around, this case is slightly complicated, I think, by a lot of, including the decision makers letter, there's a lot of changes between month and week and those sorts of figures. And you see the decision maker came to the conclusion, I think it's about, is about right, thirty-four pounds or thirty-five pounds or so was to be found from a weekly income, which tallies up pretty much with those levels. Now...
At some point, Mr Stark, it might be helpful if you could produce a single piece of paper with the, with these figures, because there is a ten pound discrepancy, and we may have to address that at some point.
So, the point that we make then, and the first point, the point that my lord Lord Carmouth identified, is that in fact, the amount that she was receiving was, as I said, noted as below the applicable amount figure, and that on the amount that she was receiving, her expenses plus the housing benefit made the accommodation unaffordable for her. And one point that we do say is that if you, if you don't look at all the figures in total to a degree, as the 1996 order requires, there is a tendency perhaps to believe that housing benefit is always, that you're awarded is always, it's always reasonable, and you should always be expected to pay that towards your contractual rent, when there might be circumstances where that wouldn't be the case, if for example, due to administrative error, your income support, child tax credit and child benefit stopped. You're still getting housing benefit, but it's your only form of income at all for a period. It might be in those circumstances it would not be reasonable to expect you to pay your housing benefit if you had no money at all otherwise to pay for any expenses. So, those three benefits, income support, child tax credit and child benefit, were the sole sources of the appellant's income. And what we say is the purpose of those benefits, it is purely to provide for subsistence living. Income support as a personal allowance is paid for the basic living costs of the adult, or if there's a couple of the couple. Child tax credit is paid towards the costs of the children, not only costs such as simply their food and such expenses, but costs of bringing up children. And that also applies to child benefit. So that is, it's our primary point, that there simply is no fat, there is no surplus, that in relation to those benefits, if you divert them to housing costs, they're no longer available to meet the purpose for which they're granted, namely your subsistence, and particularly the subsistence and the bringing up of children. That was obviously also identified in the Burnip case, in relation to what was the purpose of housing benefit. And it may be wise to take to Burnip at this point, to how that illustrates the point that we are making. And Burnip can be found in Authorities bundle one, it's at tab five, and the relevant parts of Burnip, we say, is to be found at page 134, that's MS page number 718.
718.
718, yes. This court will obviously be extremely familiar with the decision in Burnip, and the background to it, and the issue in, in relation to the application of the bedroom tax, or, I think, there was a private went to such a case, it was the local housing allowance cap on the number of bedrooms someone was entitled to, and that the regulations provided, it was only in relation to people occupied, and in relation to Mr Burnip, he needed an extra room for his overnight carer, and the case, they're primarily concerned with whether or not there was discrimination under Article 14, and whether or not that could be justified or not. But in the context of that, Mr Justice Henderson, in considering justification at paragraphs 44 and 45, turned to the, what he described as the wider benefits context. In reality, was there any money available that could be used by Mr Burnip to meet the gap between his contractual rent and his housing benefit as a result of the fact that he was not receiving full benefit because he was treated as only being entitled to one rather than two bedrooms? What Mr Justice Henderson said was, can it be said that the wider benefits context provides an objective and reasonable justification for the discrimination against Mr Burnip, which we found to be established in relation to the amount of his housing benefit? My judgment, the following considerations strongly suggest a negative answer. Firstly, I think it is necessary to draw a clear distinction between the benefits that Mr Burnip was entitled to claim for subsistence, and those which he was entitled to claim in respect of his housing needs. Now, in his case, he was entitled to incapacity benefit and disability living allowance to deal with his ordinary living expenses as a severely disabled person. The importance simply, there is no difference however in relation to your basic subsistence costs, in that Mr Burnip was awarded those enhanced benefits in recognition of his disability, but they include basic subsistence costs. And therefore, in this case, where we aren't concerned with issues of disability, you're still dealing with benefits and having to deal with basic subsistence costs. And he said, they would deal with his ordinary living expenses as a severely disabled person. They were not intended to help with his housing needs. This is demonstrated not only by the availability of housing benefit and discretionary housing payments as separate benefits, with separate rules applicable to them, but also by the way that housing benefit is structured. As I've explained, the amount of housing benefit is fixed by reference to an applicable amount. And that is right, and the applicable amount for housing benefit is the same as the applicable amount for income support.
Sorry, the same applicable amount?
Same as the applicable amount for income support.
Yes, thank you.
And if a claimant's recognizable income exceeds his applicable amount, the amount of housing benefit is reduced by sixty-five percent of the excess. So that's a taper. So you have another, you have another pound of income, you have sixty-five pence less housing benefit. Furthermore, his applicable amount included the three disability premiums, which I've mentioned, he was, as I said, because he was so severely disabled, he was entitled to three additional premiums. While the whole of his disabled living allowance was disregarded in the calculation of his recognizable income, thus, it was only if in broad terms his incapacity benefit and student loan together exceeded his applicable amount, that any reduction would fall to be made in the amount of his HB. And to the extent there was such an excess, the HB rules themselves prescribed how it was to be taken into account. It would therefore be wrong in principle, in my judgment, to regard Mr Burnip's subsistence benefits as being notionally available to him to go towards meeting the shortfall between his housing-related benefits and the rent he had to pay. Now, that would, as an analysis, is not confined, as the Court of Appeal suggested, to cases of discrimination, but is an analysis of the wider benefits context, because in relation to housing benefit, your, and your applicable amount, if your income is above the applicable amount for whatever reason, it is treated in the same way. But importantly, in particular, in relation to people like the appellant, who is on income support, they are passported. What that means is, once she is in receipt of income support, she is passported onto the maximum level of housing benefit. So she's not expected to contribute at all to her housing costs in relation to her housing benefit being reduced. She's automatically passported onto the highest level of housing benefit. The reason for that is, the same reason we say it applies in Burnip, is that because income support, child tax credit and child benefit are to deal with her ordinary subsistence costs of her and her family. So Burnip is probably the strongest and the clearest case in relation to analysing what the purpose of those benefits are. We refer to a number of other cases in our written case, and if I may just refer to two or three more without, simply because they look, they look at it in a slightly different context, as to why the same applies. The first of which is Humphries and Her Majesty's Revenue and Customs, that can be found in volume, it should be 2B of the Authorities, at tab 24. Oh, sorry, yes, it's MS 1264, and the page number is 1548. First, simply at paragraph four, which my lady Helen explains, that child tax credit replaced the separate systems for taking accounts of children's needs in the tax and benefit systems. Previously, people in work might claim the child, children's tax credit was administered by the tax authorities, people out of work might claim additions to their income support, this was administered by the benefit authorities, and the new system, a single tax credit. And it says, child tax credit is like income support and jobs security allowance, unless it's a benefit rather than a disregard, is means tested, so the higher one's income, the less the benefit, until eventually it tapers out altogether. And of course, this is the point that I made earlier, that of course, child tax credit is different to income support in one sense, even though it's set at the same level, child tax credit is set at the same level as income support, child allowances were, it's also payable to people in work. And that's explained by the quote at paragraph four about it providing a secure and stable income bridge as families move off welfare and into work. If one turns then to paragraph 22 of the judgment, at page 1554, MS page number 1270. And here, if I may refer to a point made by the respondent... And here, if I may refer to a point made by the respondents, suggested that in this case, it was being suggested that child tax credit was not set at subsistence levels. But in fact, in my submission, what that means, as set out in in the judgment of my lady Hale, is when it says the fifth line down, firstly, we're concerned with non-mains tested benefits, child tax credits, of course, means tested, they're not a subsistence level. What, if it really is meant there, it's not that it's not paid as a subsistence level, i.e. only is actually the amounts are subsistence, but it's not only paid to people who are living on subsistence levels of benefit. And Paragraph Twenty-five, over the page on one two seven one.
I'm sorry, you're going to have to slow down a little bit, because I'm finding it difficult to take a moment.
page number one two seven one. And I note later on that there is a reference to what the Revenue said as being, perhaps one could be sceptical about it in one sense, because child poverty is a relative measure, but it says, the aim of child tax credit is to provide support for children, the principal policy objective is to target the support so as to reduce child poverty, and the benefit attaches to the child rather than the parent in that regard. If I take you actually just briefly back to Burnip, I realise I've missed one bit out in relation to Burnip, and that's at Paragraph Thirty-three. And that's at MS number seven one five. Justice Henderson said at Paragraph Thirty-three, the amount of HB, as explained below, depends on the relationship between the claimant's actual income on the one hand, his applicable amount, a statually prescribed amount representing what the claimant is taken to need to live on, on the one hand, and the rent he has to pay. So I said that supports the point that we make, that is, the statually prescribed amount representing what the claimant is taken to need to live on. I won't take you back to Matheson, which is referred to in our written case, but in which you may recall, in that case concerning a boy who had had to go into hospital for more than eighty-four days, which meant that he lost his DLA. Payments were then made up in relation to certain payments lost for more income support. But in that case, it was recognised that all that did was bring you up to a subsistence level of benefit. And that's can be found at Matheson, which is in Volume Two B, Tab Twenty-five, MS one two eight five, but conscious of time.
I'm sorry, you're going to have to go a little more slow, I'm having difficulty hearing you, and also going very quickly.
I am sorry, my lord.
It's Two B twenty-five in the Authority.
Yes, it's Two B, Tab Twenty-five, Matheson, and the Secretary of State for Work and Pension.
This is Paragraph Thirty-eight of your case.
Yes, so it's Paragraph Thirty-eight of our case, it can be found most easily perhaps there.
Thank you.
What's the electronic page reference to Matheson? Not that I need to look it up, I remember it very well, sorry.
One two eight five.
One two eight five. Anything that isn't in the core volume of Authorities, you need to give us the page number for, because some of us only have it electronically, we don't, we try to save trees and have fewer volumes of Authorities in the court, and so some of us are dealing with electronically, so remember, always give us the page reference, thank you.
The simple point that arises from Matheson is, is simply that it is said in that case that by the fact there was some more income support awarded because some other benefited, some more income support was awarded because another benefit had fallen away. But that benefit, the income support, simply brought them back up to subsistence levels. It didn't help the family in that case, who said they were having to spend eight thousand extra pounds because of travelling to the hospital, it didn't meet those costs. There was no surplus in the income support to meet those additional costs. If I may then take you to the case of SG, or the benefit cap case, now that can be found, and I'll start with MS one five one seven, that's Volume Two C, Tab Thirty-four, Pages one four eight seven and eight. And that's the judgment of my Lord Carnworth in that case. And obviously, we recall in relation to the benefit cap case, one of the issues that arose in particular was the whether or not the Secretary of State in setting the benefit cap had had sufficient regard to Article Three One of the United Nations Convention on Rights of the Child. Namely, in particular, the effect of imposing the benefit cap upon families with children. And the benefit cap, of course, primarily starts with attacking housing benefit, or by reducing housing benefit. That's the first benefit that is reduced in relation to the benefit cap. So that if, for example, someone had a total weekly costs of eight hundred and eighty pounds, and housing benefit included in that came to eight hundred and eighty pounds, if they were paid five hundred pounds, the benefit cap would cut in there, and it was normally housing benefit that would be reduced first in relation to those benefits. But if I can take you to what my Lord Carnworth said in that case about the purpose of those benefits, firstly at page one one oh, in fact, if you go back, it may be best to do this first, page one one oh, manuscript page one five one two. And the point was made in that the Children's Commissioner had put evidence before the And the report to the Children's Commissioner, a child rights impact assessment of the Welfare Reform Bill, which set out a number of likely outcomes of concern to the Commissioner. They included increases in child poverty, including the diversion of housing to housing costs of money that would otherwise have been spent on necessities for the children's My lord notes that this view has special significance as that of the authority responsible of the children at two thousand and four, for advising the Secretary of State on the interests of children. One then turns to how those benefits, I said, what they're intended for, a longer exposition is given at one two five, on page one five one seven. Firstly citing what my lady lady Hale had said in Humphries and Revenue Customs Commissioners, the aim of child tax credit is to provide support for children.
Sorry, paragraph?
It's one two five.
Thank you.
Page one four eight eight on MS page one five one seven. The aim of child tax credit is to provide support for children, the principal policy objective is target that support so as to reduce child poverty, the benefit, which is child rather than the parent, the same could be said, I say that, we say that's correct, of child benefit, especially as child benefit forms a part of that applicable so the point that we draw from that, again, is that it's a part of the benefits that are addressed for subsistence level of your everyday living expenses, and that if you are required to divert them to housing costs, there is a risk therefore that they are not being, well, there's not more than a risk, they are not being spent on the purpose that they are provided for, and as the Children's Commission notes, the risk therefore that arises, particularly in relation to child poverty. And obviously, that's a point that's taken up at rather more length by the interveners in their evidence, but we say that's a point that holds good. And it's a reason why, in particular, why that in considering affordability, one should ask oneself the question, is accommodation affordable if you're having to divert benefits intended for the child to housing costs, when that of itself may mean that you are, in essence, by reducing the amount spent on the children's subsistence levels, pushing children into further into child poverty? And this may be also a good point to introduce and recall what the House of Lords decided in the case of Allian Moran. It's Allian Birmingham and Moran and Manchester, which is Tab Twenty, that's in Bundle Two B, MS page number eleven seven seven. It may just be easier just to look at the headnote in relation to that, which is on eleven seven eight. That was the case that the concern, maybe all we've recalled, is what was meant by reasonable to continue to occupy. Did you, in considering reasonable to continue to occupy under Section one hundred and seventy-five and one hundred and ninety-one of the Housing Act, simply look at whether or not accommodation was reasonable to occupy for one more night? Or did it involve looking at reasonable to continue to occupy a period of time? And the House of Lords decided that clearly it meant, because of the use of the words reasonable to continue to occupy, you had to look to the future. And therefore, as a rule of thumb, that has been taken as meaning that, is it reasonable to continue to occupy indefinitely? Or the foreseeable future? There might be cases where the foreseeable future means that you're only required to reasonably continue to occupy for a short period of time. So if you present as homeless, and in fact, you've also got in your hand an offer from the local authority you're about to accept of another property, it may well be reasonable for you to continue to occupy until that house is available, but it's not reasonable to continue to occupy indefinitely. But that is important to recall in relation to the question of affordability, is that when you're looking at affordability in the context of reasonable to continue to occupy, you're looking at, is it affordable in the context of, is it reasonable to continue to occupy this accommodation indefinitely at this rate? So i.e., is it reasonable to continue to occupy the accommodation indefinitely when you are having to live below subsistence levels of benefit indefinitely? Maybe that you have to scrimp and save for a few weeks is, might be one thing, but it's very different to a case when you're expected to live indefinitely below subsistence benefit levels. If I may return then to passporting, and you recall the point that I made, that in relation to people who are on income support, they're passported to the highest level of housing benefit, the maximum level, and the same applies to child tax credits.
The same applies to?
To child tax credits, so if they, if you receive income support also, and you have children, you're eligible for child tax credits, you get the full level of child tax credits. Because passporting of itself recognises, there's nothing in your, i.e. there's no surplus in your income support, not to meet anything out of those costs either. And passporting also entitles you to a number of other matters, such as, as we set out in our written case, cold weather payments, free prescriptions, maternity grants, again, additional costs that you're not expected to meet from your subsistence benefits. And the last, if I just would turn back to SG, that's Tab Thirty-four, again, and it's at MS one five two nine one five three oh. Sorry, page reference again. One five two nine to one five three oh. And it's the judgment of Lady Hale in that case, Paragraphs one seventy, one seventy-three, and referring to the facts of one of the applicants concerned, SG. Final sentence of that paragraph, it's obvious that SG has very good reasons for wanting to continue to live in Stamford Hill, that accommodation there is in short supply because of demand in the local community. And if she does stay there, her weekly income will fall well below that which the state deems necessary for her and her three young children to live on. So all these authorities, I say, are consistent with the same point, they're consistent with the statutory scheme as explained in Burnip, i.e. that income support, child tax credit and child benefit have as their purpose meeting your subsistence level costs.
Why, I mean, you're coming back to this possibly, why, why does Paragraph Two of the order refer to social security benefits without any qualification? Treating them as part of your income, if you're right, that they're really not relevant for?
Well, there are a number of potential reasons for, the reasons for that. One is, of course, there are certain circumstances in which people are entitled to some social security benefits, although they're also working. So an example is that housing benefit taper. So if you have, if you're in a situation where you have more income than the applicable amount, you don't lose all your housing benefit overnight at that stage. The same thing applies to people on child tax credits.
But there are also some benefits which are not means tested.
Yes.
Which are obviously going to take you above applicable amounts. That certainly used to be the case with widowed parents allowance in the olden days.
Well, that's the second category of benefits that fall to be included, obviously, in any case.
So they're bound to be included in what your resources are, but it's going to mean that you therefore are likely to have more than enough to meet certain costs, and therefore your other benefits will be reduced.
Yes, that's right. So that's the point, is that there are, that social security benefits aren't limited to these three benefits, there are various.
Were you read it as implicitly with a bracket saying, except those that are means tested?
Well, no, because again, housing benefits means tested, but you can still have a taper where you still get some benefit in that regard.
As I understand what you're saying, of course, your benefits are all taken into account in deciding what your resources are, but when you come to deciding what your reasonable living costs are, the benchmark is basically the subsistence benefits.
Yes, because Parliament has said, this is what you need to live on. What do they mean by what is what you need to live on? They mean your reasonable living expenses.
It's not that you don't take them into account as part of your resources, it's how you assess what you need to live on.
Yes, so, and as Parliament has assessed, that's what you need to live on, and in all those cases, we say support that, as being the purpose of those subsistence benefits. And they're not set at higher levels than that, one of the reasons being, being obviously that the reasons referred to in the benefit cap is work incentivisation. If you set benefits, those sorts of benefits are levels that are more than you need at a basic level to live on, then the suggestion is, but from government commonly would be, then people won't seek work, because they don't need to seek work in those circumstances. Work incentivisation is a part of setting benefits only at subsistence levels, because no one would want to remain on those subsistence levels forever if they could get out of them by obtaining work. So it's not that they don't appear on the ledger, if I can look at it in that sense, but although they clearly must appear on the income side of the ledger, they are provided for one purpose, namely to meet your reasonable living expenses. And no more than your reasonable living expenses.
Except that that doesn't lead to what might have been a logical conclusion that they're always left out.
I'm sorry, my lady.
That doesn't lead to what might otherwise have been a logical conclusion, that they are always left out. They're taken out again as the measure of the reasonable living expenses, because I think your case is that sometimes that they can be taken into account.
Well, we don't say it's a hard and fast rule.
No.
No, one example is the example as I've already given, if it's short term, that it may be that for short term, you can handle having to, I mean, well, I say handle is perhaps not the right word, you can cope with for a short period with a certain deduction, if it's only for a short period. That's one such example. Another example might be, I suppose, if it's absolutely de minimis. If it's fifty pence or something of that nature, where your expenses are higher than that, that might be regarded as being figures that you could, in those circumstances, be expected to find. So we don't say it's an absolute matter, that it always must be the case, but it's a, as a general rule. a, as a general rule, because of the purpose of those benefits, because of what they are provided for, they reflect the level of a person's reasonable living expenses. There might, as I said, another example we draw, it might be that someone's reasonable living expenses are contributed, significantly contributed to or paid for by someone else. So if, for example, grandmother bought all the children's clothes and contributed with a weekly shop, on those facts, things might be different. So we don't say it's a hard and fast rule at all.
And there might be situations in which, in fact, you needed more.
Indeed, that it's a baseline, not necessarily reflecting that that's enough. So examples might be, say, if you had particularly, a child at a school that meant that you had particularly extra transport costs in relation to a child who had to attend a special school, for example, and you were in a remote location, you had additional costs. Because income support and child tax credit and child benefit are set at the same level for everyone, they don't take account of those additional costs. So it may well be that if you have additional costs, that they obviously come, they make your reasonable living expenses higher.
But they're set by region, are they? I mean, costs in some parts of the country are much higher than in others.
Well, it costs in some parts of the, well, I think that can certainly be said in relation to rent, and that's why housing benefits levels are set at broad local rental areas. So rents that are regarded as, will get housing benefit at a higher rate in London than, say, in the black country where the appellant lives. There may be evidence in certain circumstances, there are more higher costs in other families in other parts of the country, but when you're looking at basic living expenses, it may well, it's more likely to be that the supermarket is going to be charging the same amount in one area as it is in another. So that's what we have to say about the subsistence benefits and what their purpose is, that there really is no surplus, no fat, certainly not for you to be able to be reasonable for you to continue to occupy accommodation indefinitely. Now, if I can turn then to housing benefit, which is a point referred to at length by the respondents, and the respondents seek to rely upon, as I see it, the fact, well, look, housing benefits never been necessarily intended to meet all your contractual rent, because there have always been certain limits on housing benefit, and those limits on housing benefit have become tighter and tighter over the years, because of how the housing benefit system has developed. So originally, there were restrictions, for example, if you were living in a property that's too big, for example, and then area-based rent levels were introduced rather than individual property-based rent levels, and then those areas with the local housing allowance were widened, so you had a much broader area being taken into account. So suddenly, properties in one part of an area may then become unaffordable when they were affordable before, from housing benefit purposes. But none of those examples given by the respondents are directed at suggesting that you should remain in that accommodation and live at below subsistence levels. Indeed, many of those changes are in fact directed at suggesting that people should leave that accommodation and go elsewhere and find cheaper accommodation. A particular example is in fact the example that applied to this appellant. She was regarded as living somewhere too big, because the house had four bedrooms, and she had four small children living with her, she was only treated as being allowed to have three. Another example, of course, is the spare room subsidy or the bedroom tax. You'll recall that in relation to the spare room subsidy or the bedroom tax, one of the very objects of the policy was that people should move to free up larger social housing. That's referred to in the quotation from Carmichael in the intervenor's case. At page 159, MS page 159.
Paragraph.
Paragraph. It's paragraph 18.2. It's page seven, I think, of the case, 159. Lord Toulson said in Carmichael, in summary, as part of its policy for curbing public expenditure, the government aimed to ensure that social sector tenants of working age were occupying premises with more bedrooms than they required, should wherever possible, move into smaller accommodation. Indeed, that was one of the methods that the Secretary of State particularly relied upon in the benefit cap case of SG. If we're reducing your housing benefit, because it's justified for us to have a benefit cap, then try and find somewhere else to live. Now, it may well be that for the reasons that the intervenor identifies, it may be much harder to find somewhere else to live than simply saying, I will now go off and find cheaper accommodation. But that appears to be the purpose behind those housing benefit changes. The respondent cannot point to any case, or any of those changes, where it is an avowed purpose, that people are told, well, tough, you're now, in those circumstances, you should remain in this accommodation, but live below subsistence levels.
The premise here in your submission is that this, it is reasonable to stay in these premises.
That would be, has to be, the premise of the respondent is, it's reasonable to remain, or reasonable to continue to occupy accommodation where you are having to bite into your subsistence benefits. In this case, we say very significantly into her subsistence benefits, but the actual point, we say the general rule, is if you are really required to bite into those benefits at all, there's immediately the risk that you're not spending them upon what Parliament intended them for, in the sense of, in particular, in relation to children.
I mean, it must be implicit in the benefit cap that you're not going to be able to use all your benefits for the original purpose, because there's something that's got to give. If you're not getting all the benefit you would have otherwise got, say, for your four children, then you've got to meet it in some other way.
Well, if you recall from that case, my lord, that various things were suggested by the government in that case as to how that could be met. Discretionary housing payments, though, of course, they are discretionary, and therefore you can't necessarily rely upon that you're going to get them, or how long you're going to get them for. Obtaining cheaper accommodation, of course, one of the other reasons given in the benefit cap case was work incentivisation, that that may mean that because your benefits are, you go out and get, you can go out and get some, get work that may, but all of those are directed to either being able to increase your income, if you're fortunate enough to be able to increase your income, or to being able to reduce your housing costs by obtaining cheaper accommodation. We say. And that brings me back simply to the point, and that's because those benefits are only awarded at a level that's reasonable, the bottom level that's expected to be reasonable for you to live on, is reflected in the levels of benefit you're provided for by the state in your income support, child tax credit and child's benefit. Equally so in relation to housing benefit, the main driver below the, behind those reforms was to reduce the housing benefit bill. Now, in reality, that was by form of, if I might call it backdoor rent control, i.e. rather than bringing back rent control as under the rent tax, by reducing the amount that housing benefit was willing to pay, that landlords would be expected, hopefully then realising, well, they're not, if they're not going to pay for it, we'll bring our rents down. There is of course a problem with that in a housing market where you have inbuilt scarcity otherwise, and competition for accommodation in the private rented sector coming from other people who in the past may not have sought necessarily accommodation long term in the private rented sector, such as because it's much more difficult to buy common houses, increasing house prices, the disparate level between house prices and earnings, for example. And that's reflected in what the National Audit Office report said. If I can take you to volume 2D, the authorities at set. My manuscript number. 18. Oh five. That's at tab 42 in volume 2D. And in the key findings of the National Audit Office into homelessness, they noted that the affordability of tenancies is likely to contribute...
Sorry, you're reading 185, paragraph?
Paragraph 10.
Thank you.
Likely to contribute to the increase in homelessness since 2010, the cost of private rented accommodation increased three times faster than earnings across England. In London, the increase was eight times, with private rents rising by 24%, and average earnings increasing by 3%. Homelessness tends to be higher in places where private rents have increased most since 2013. And then at 11, changes to local housing allowance likely to contribute to the affordability of tenancies for those on benefits, an element of the increase in homelessness. Since 2011, the Department for Work and Pensions introduced a series of welfare reforms, including capping and freezing local housing allowance. These reforms have been designed to reduce overall welfare spending and to provide incentives for benefit recipients to take up employment. They reduce the amount of household incomes possible to derive from benefits where the local housing allowance applies. At the same time, rents in the private rented sector in much of the country, London in particular, have increased faster than wage growth. All of these factors appear to contribute to private rented properties becoming less affordable, which in turn is likely to be contributing to homelessness caused by the ending of assured short-hold tenancies. But again, the same point arises, it's no part of the intention of the changes to those housing benefit reforms that people necessarily should be expected to live below subsistence levels. It may be that the consequences of those reforms have been that that's the case, but we can say that no assistance can be withdrawn from those consequences, to say that in fact, that accommodation is affordable in those circumstances, or it's open to authorities to regard accommodation as being affordable in those circumstances. Simply because there are more people living in unaffordable accommodation does not make that accommodation affordable. So we see, we say that's, again, no reason to depart from fundamental point, general principle or starting point, we say, in these assessments, that if you are required to bite into your income support, child tax credit or child benefit, that it is not affordable, though that there may be exceptions to that general rule depending on the circumstance of a particular case, such as the benevolent grandmother that I've already referred to. And we don't suggest that it's a hard and fast rule, but it is, it should be the starting point of any such assessment, rather than a judgment simply made by the housing officer based on their own opinion as to what someone should be able to afford.
Could you just help me in the broader picture? What are these persons to do? If they, let's assume they can't work, they're living on the minimum provision from benefits and child support and tax credits and so forth, they can't afford their rent, what happens?
Well, this is the purpose of the safety net with which we are concerned in this case, i.e. part seven of the Housing Act is designed to assist people in that position. Because their accommodation is not reasonable for them to continue to occupy, they are homeless.
Yeah.
And therefore, if they fall into a priority group, such as the appellant and her children do, because they're regarded as having priority need, then the Act says that you have a duty to secure that suitable accommodation is made available for their occupation. And of course, suitable accommodation also has one eye on the 1996 order, because affordability is also of prime relevance in the question of whether or not accommodation is suitable. There's no point in you moving out of property A for the local authority to put you into a property that you can't afford. So that's, that's the purpose, that's what the appellant's case is, that she had fallen into that situation, she couldn't afford to live there anymore.
So the authority has to find her accommodation, one way or another, that she can afford?
Yes, and accepting that authorities have difficulties in providing long-term accommodation, of course, how great their difficulty is does depend across the country, so therefore there may be, that duty can be discharged by short-term accommodation and then into a longer accommodation, then if you're fortunate, potentially into a long-term social rented accommodation. But it can also be discharged by them making a proper private rented sector offers as well. But they're all subject to that minimum requirement, that it must be suitable, and for it to be suitable, it must be affordable. And that's one of the points as identified in the divisional court in the SG case. It's the judgment of Mr Justice, it's Lord Justice Elias in the SG case, and now, of course, I'm trying to find my reference. Skipped past it. The SG, the SG case in the divisional court is in tab 2B, as I recall. It's tab 30. Para 53, that's MS page number 1394. And again, one of the thrusts of the Secretary of State's case in that, and also in comments made in the House of Commons, was that part seven is there to pick up the pieces of people who cannot continue, it's not reasonable to continue to occupy. And what Lord Justice Elias said at paragraph 53, after referring to the critical questions whether somebody is made homeless can be said to be homeless intentionally as a result of the cap. The latter issue was considered by Geraldine Andrews QC, sitting as a deputy high court judge in Best and Oxford City Council. She held that where a local authority owes an applicant a full housing duty, that duty is not discharged by the provision of accommodation which is unaffordable. The judge also held that where an applicant through his own fault obtains, fails to obtain a benefit to which he's entitled, the housing authority may be entitled to reach the view that he's made himself intentionally homeless. That's not a matter of issue in this case. We agree, but it seems to us inconceivable that whether already housed or seeking housing could properly be regarded as intentionally homeless where the rent has become unaffordable simply through the application of the benefit cap. Moreover, it would no longer be reasonable to expect them to remain in accommodation. There will of course be cases where the question arises whether reduced income resulted in the application of the cap is a real reason for them to be made homeless, but that does not affect the principle. And that simply is a reiteration of the point that I've already, of the point that I've already made in relation to accommodation is not suitable, if it's not affordable. And if one applies all those criteria to the appellant's case, the appellant was living in accommodation where she had to find £151.49 from her subsistence benefits a month to meet her rent. Question then, always, was it reasonable for her to continue to occupy indefinitely, that accommodation, in light of that shortfall? And there was no evidence, no suggestion that that shortfall was not going to continue indefinitely. By reference to the starting point, we say there is, there's one answer to that, it was not reasonable on the information that we have, but we accept that it may be that if it was, the matter were to be questioned, we referred back, the authority may have the reasons that my ladies referred to, in certain circumstances, they could identify other matters, would mean it was affordable, though as much as we would say that seems unlikely on the facts as they are known.
How long was the extra shortfall from repaying the overpayment going to continue?
Well, the overpayment appeared to be substantial. I can't give you off the top of my head a figure of exactly how long that would be, but it certainly was not going to be imminent, and it was still continuing at the time that she, that she'd left. And there are no findings on that by Birmingham City Council or below, or by the judge. And there are no findings on that by Birmingham City Council or below, or by the judge. For those reasons, we say that our, our ground one, issue one is made out in our favour. And therefore, the decision cannot stand because of the failure to apply that principle. If I can then turn to the second issue in relation to the Code of Guidance. An issue which is closely related to the first. If I can take you to the Code of Guidance, and that can be found in Authorities Bundle One. The section, the relevant section is chapter seventeen, suitability of accommodation. The relevant paragraphs can be found at MS page number six eight three and six eight four. See, there are two paragraphs in the code that relate to affordability. Seventeen thirty-nine, which is the first of those paragraphs, largely repeats the nineteen ninety-six order. But with some, in italics, some guidance given by the Secretary of State in relation to that. And so you see that the Secretary of State says all forms of income which we accept falls into that category. But you also note at the end of that category is paragraph nine, when it refers to taking into account savings and capital sums. And the Secretary of State has noted then says, and say, which may be a source of income or might be available to meet accommodation expenses. However, it should be borne in mind that drawing from the parallel social securities assistance, capital savings below a threshold amount are disregarded for the purposes of assessing a claim. Which appears to give an indication that low savings should not necessarily be taken into account for deciding whether or not it's affordable, because in those circumstances, those savings may be set aside to deal with urgent matters that would not be covered by reasonable living expenses. And then there is a reference to the costs, again, and finally to his or his other reasonable living expenses. There's no other particular guidance given in relation to the paragraph at seventeen thirty-nine. But seventeen forty goes on to say, in considering an applicant's residual income after meeting the costs of accommodation, the Secretary of State recommends that housing authorities regard accommodation as not being affordable if the applicant be left with a residual income which would be less than the level of income support or income-based job seeker's allowance that is applicable in respect of the applicant or would be applicable if he or she was entitled to claim such benefit. The first thing to note about that, because of the reference to would be applicable if he or she was entitled to claim such benefit, is the reference is to the applicable amount rather than the amount that an individual is receiving. This amount will vary from case to case according to the circumstances and the composition of the applicant's household. Circumstances might include disability. So that there were various disability premiums paid in relation to income support. They would of their nature increase your applicable amount. Because those premiums are again intended to meet the additional costs arising from disability. And composition of the applicant's household. We say that must mean everyone in the applicant's household. It can't only mean people in the applicant's household who are receiving benefits that refer to income support. Then says a current tariff of applicable amounts in relation to such benefits should be available within the Authorities' Housing Benefits Section. And indeed, it was three points out, and as the intervenor points out, that is the basic tool for assessing housing benefit. You look at the applicable amount and see whether or not someone's income is or not below it. Then we say there is a second element to this part of the code on relation to is housing authorities will need to consider whether the applicant could afford the housing costs without being deprived of basic essentials such as food, clothing, heating, transport and other essentials. And that's a reference back to some of the earlier case law before the affordability order that accommodation can't be a reason to continue to occupy if you can't meet those basic costs. And of course, that second element of the code is not, does not deal only with those whose applicable amount is such that you leave someone with a residual income below that amount. It may include people whose income is above the applicable amount. And that's because the applicable amount is a baseline, not a ceiling. I.e., it may be that your circumstances are such that you have considerably higher expenses than the applicable amount, but they are still reasonable living expenses. So as an example, consider someone who's in low-paid work, who may have quite considerable childcare expenses. That may take them above their, what would be expenses that only relate to an applicable amount. So you don't simply look at whether or not you're left with a residual income below the applicable amount. You also go on to look at the question of even if your income is above an applicable amount, it's still not enough you to live on because of the nature of your expenses. And the final element is, again, a reference from the Secretary of State recommending don't put people in places where they have to start claiming benefits. Doesn't apply to the circumstance of this case, but shows the thrust of, underlines the thrust of that guidance.
So your point about this being not what they're in receipt of, but what is the applicable amount here has a consequence on the figures because of the overpayment that's being recouped.
Yes.
So they wouldn't be short by a hundred and fifty-one pounds, they would be short by two hundred and forty-nine.
Yeah, so I think there are some figures that may, again, with a few pounds either, but the round, the approximate figure, that's right, that's short of not simply one hundred and forty-five-one pounds, but actually, she was already a hundred pounds lower than the applicable amount. The complication that arises-
I think, I think that may be the wrong way around, because isn't the shortfall of a hundred and fifty-one pounds per month based upon the actual benefits she was getting?
No, the shortfall was between the rent and the housing benefit that she was getting. So there was a hundred and fifty-one pounds forty-nine that she had to find from-
I beg your pardon, yes.
But her other income was already reduced by over a hundred pounds below the applicable amount.
Absolutely, you're absolutely correct, thank you.
In round terms, two hundred and fifty pounds below.
Two hundred and fifty pounds a month. And of course, there may be situations where someone's income is considerably below the applicable amount. Say if someone is working but not earning very much. Someone, a self-employed person trying to build up a particular business. So therefore, that's why your actual earnings, your actual income isn't necessarily a very good guide compared to the applicable amount. That's no doubt why the same figure is selected by the Secretary of State as the baseline for all persons, regardless of the source of their income.
But I mean, your point on seventeen forty is relatively simple, isn't it, that if she was left with less than the applicable amount in her case, then prima facie she wasn't able to survive, subsist on that?
Yes. And in relation to that, our point is that that is the first question that the reviewer should ask themselves in every case, in every case.
But I mean, isn't that your point, that that wasn't asked?
Yes. The point that we say is that it wasn't asked. It can't be found anywhere in the reviewer's decision that he says to himself, well, let's see what your applicable amount was, and let's see what your residual income was. And having come to the-
I mean, it's a short point, isn't it? I mean, you sort of go on and on, but sorry, I'm not doing rude about it. But I mean, am I right in thinking the way you put it is actually a very short and simple point?
Well, that is the short and simple point.
Right.
You're quite right, my lord, that the code provides a, only one rational answer to its construction. There is a complication that arises from the change in how children-
Yes, but that, I mean, when one looks at it, the source of the code is one government department, and the source of the changes to the benefit system is a different government department. And it wouldn't be surprising if one government department didn't catch up straight away with all the changes made by a different government department when drafting the code.
Indeed, and of course, the level of benefits is the same.
Well, you make that point, the level of benefits is exactly the same, and you also make the point that it was a transition. And so in two thousand and six, there were still loads of people, in fact, the majority of people, under the old system.
Yes, I think it may be there's some suggestion that the figures are slightly wrong, but but they're half and half, I think it was, by two thousand and six were under the old. But there was still a significant minority by the time that this appellant's-
Well, that's the point, isn't it?
Yes, is the point. I won't labour it because it seems my lord-
Well, we've got the point. Whether you're right or whether you're wrong is another matter, and no doubt Mr. Manning will be trying to convince us that you're wrong. But, and that Court of Appeal was right. But nevertheless, I think you can take it that we've got the point of your argument.
Well, indeed, and the reason we've got, I may go on to say, well, the reason, of course, we say that we're right in relation to that point is because of the consequences that arise if you adopt only the income support figures and ignore the child figures. You have a situation-
Well, you set that out very plainly in your written case, and it's quite obvious, really.
I won't press it further than-
What it means, as I say, right or wrong, that's, that's-
Yeah, well, there is, yes, there's only one additional issue, of course, that in relation to that is the, if one looks at, of course, one has to have regard in the exercise of these functions too, the need to safeguard and promote the welfare of the children. How can you possibly be having regard to that if you're ignoring the benefits paid to the, for their very subsistence in calculating what the residual income is? And that, we say, can't, you can't possibly be right in that regard. But going, return to my lord's point, the decision letter is silent on it. Now, in other authorities, there's suggestion, well, you don't have to mention seventeen forty, but we say that, we accept you don't have to mention the exact number, but you do have to show that you've had regard to the provisions and the act of the code that are relevant to the decision that you have to make. And in relation to a decision on affordability, that means you must look at this question. And that if you don't do the mathematics, as we've all been looking at, is what is your applicable amount? What does, what is your residual income? What gap does that give you? You can't answer the question properly as to whether or not it's reasonable to continue to occupy this accommodation indefinitely. And there's no substitute to that to do what the decision maker appears to have done in this case, which is to then go on to substitute for that their own assessment of what is a reasonable sum. If one returns to the letter itself in the, in the core volume, in the appendix, it's at page sixty-one of the appendix, it's MS page number two three seven. He substitutes for that assessment halfway down the penultimate paragraph, having set out the figures and referred to the food and household amount. This figure seems to me to be excessive for a family of your size, given this is purported to have only accounted for food and household items. And then he refers to what he accepts another figure will be too low. I consider it as a matter of normal household budgeting, that you've managed your household finances in a way to ensure that you were able to meet your rental obligation. I cannot accept there was not sufficient flexibility in your overall household income in excess of three hundred and eleven pounds per week, which I meet a weekly shortfall in rent of thirty-four pounds. But if you don't answer the first question, you can't answer the second question posed by the Code of Guidance properly. Because you'll simply come up with your own opinion as distinct from Parliament's assessment of what is reasonable for someone to live on. And that's why it's necessary to follow the Code of Guidance. And this decision letter clearly did not follow the Code of Guidance, that on its face, he didn't have regard to it. And we don't accept that you can say that you've had regard to the first element simply by carrying out that exercise based on your own assessment of what it's worth. Because your assessment has to be informed by that. If you're going to depart from the guidance, and of course, the law is that that you only want to depart from guidance if you can show very good reason for doing so, in particular, in relation to guidance following public consultation, in particular in relation to guidance concerning the interests of vulnerable people-
This is statutory guidance. It's statutory guidance, isn't it?
Yes, it's statutory guidance, issued in section one eight two.
You have to have regard to it, I mean, it's not-
Yes, you have to have regard to it, and I think the point that I'm stressing-
And you say, I mean, you can depart from it for good reason, you've got to say what those reasons are.
Yes, and if you're showing that you're departing for a good reason, you need to have shown that you've applied it in the first place and understood it properly, and then set out why you think you can depart from it. Simply substituting your own assessment of what you think is or not reasonable is not, is not in any way, shape or form, a good reason. Nor can you show why you departed from it if you haven't done that first assessment.
I'm not sure you've left any stone unturned, actually.
No, well, I'm skipping through the scene. If I had left any stone unturned, if I can deal very shortly in light of the indication money that you gave me in relation to reason, you will see that below there is a suggestion that it's a breach of the Holmes-Moorehouse principle, that you shouldn't nitpick in relation to reasoning, to say that-
Well, your point on that is that the reasons simply don't address the principal question that they had to address.
Exactly.
And that's a very different thing from nitpicking. And finding ambiguities where none exist, et cetera.
Indeed, and that the reliance upon Holmes-Moorehouse is not appropriate in cases where the right statute question's not been asked, and the Code of Guidance clearly hasn't been properly applied or followed.
Can you, I mean, I think you've probably covered the ground. It does be a matter of interest, it may not be relevant, the delay that's happened in this, I mean, we're dealing with a decision in December two thousand and thirteen, five years plus on. Well, one, what has happened to your client in the meantime? If she's been housed somewhere presumably?
She's still in the temporary accommodation provided by the local authority. And they have continued to provide with accommodation pending the
I see.
Appeal process. Any determination of this appeal?
But I mean, two years of the delay seems to be in between the Court for Appeal decision and the application for leave to this court.
Well, the Legal Aid Agency is responsible, we say, for that delay because they were not persuaded that we should bring this appeal until after permission was granted.
Right, thank you.
And therefore, unless I can assist you further with any points, and those are the, that's the appellant's case.
I think we've asked you all the questions we wanted to ask you, Mr. Stock, and we would welcome a single page with the relevant figures on it, which- Mr. Royston, do you wish to follow? Mr. Manning? Oh, would it be better if the intervenors went first? And then you can reply to both that blasts?
That was what we'd tentatively agreed-
It's not on, I don't have a timetable as to who was coming next, but it obviously makes sense for Mr. Westgate to come next. It's not on, I don't have a timetable as to who was coming next, but it obviously makes sense for Mr Westgate to come next.
So I think we did plan that I'd go next. Yes. Before I start, can I start on my the substance of my submissions, can I just make a correction to Professor Bradshaw's statement where the figures have gone where the figures have gone a little bit awry? If I can ask you to turn to, it's MS four six eight in the intervenor's additional documents. And it's paragraph fourteen. You may have seen that in the first table
Hang on a second.
Yes.
Four six eight.
It's, yes, four six eight, which should be paragraphs twelve to fourteen with two tables.
Yes.
And the table, you may have noticed, adds up to more than a hundred, the first table. And the explanation for that is that forty-eight point six should in fact be forty point six. So and the same error appears in paragraph fourteen. And then there's a a further transposition error at fifteen point one where this draws on figures from the table, the second table, which is at the top of page four hundred and sixty-nine. And there it says fifteen point one, in two thousand and six seven, forty-six percent of lone parents were not getting support, that that should be fifty-four percent, which is the figure against no in the corresponding table. So what it comes down to is that in two thousand and six seven, just over half, fifty-four percent of lone parents on income support were receiving what we pulled in our written submissions, old style support. And then by twenty eleven twelve, that had dropped to one in ten. It's their figures that Mr Stark dealt with, and I think he alluded to some issue about the figures, that's that I think is where that comes from. I'll probably have little else to say about the those figures and the guidance. The intervenors intervene to invite the court to to give clear guidance. Supportive of the way in which the appellant's put their case. Firstly, that it's not generally reasonable for a family to continue to occupy accommodation where in order to afford their rent, they must reduce their residual income to below the level of subsistence benefits. If that's adopted, then it will end what the evidence suggests is something of a post-code lottery under which various authorities adopt different guidelines or or none, producing a wide variation in approach. Secondly, if an authority departs from that general rule, then it has to give clear reasons for doing so, that sufficiently explain what the applicant did or failed to do. And that, we say, is especially important where children are concerned. Because whatever approach an authority is permitted to adopt, whether it has to follow subsistence levels or take them as a presumptive level or can reach its own conclusions, whatever approach an authority can adopt, it has to ensure that the judgment it makes safeguard and promote the welfare of children involved and and present arrangements that are enforced where a number of authorities fail to do that. Now, this is against a background where recent benefit policy has, without changing the underlying principles on which benefits are awarded, changed their practical effect. Because, as we suggest in our written submissions, assistance with the costs of renting was designed with the aim of making it possible for people who were reliant on benefit nonetheless to rent modest accommodation. So, for example, the LHA allowance was pegged in its final incarnation at thirty the thirtieth percentile. But but the combination of rising rents in the private rented sector and limitations in a freeze on local housing allowance rates has meant that that design feature has been undermined, and the effect is that, as Ms Neat points out in her statement, the actual cost of renting a property at the thirtieth percentile now isn't covered by housing benefit in ninety-five percent of areas that are used to the calculation of that benefit, the broad rental market areas. In more than half, the shortfall is less than is more than fifty pounds a month, and in nearly a quarter, the shortfall's a hundred pounds a month. And that, of course, then leaves those who are dependent on subsistence benefits with the the choice either to eat into those benefits to meet their rent and so deprive themselves and their children of their daily living needs. And that's not to meet some temporary crisis, it's something that will go on on an indefinite basis. Or they become homeless and face the kind of decision that happened in this case. Now, we accept that the arguments may have large consequences because it may mean that people who are now living in accommodation where they face that choice will already be homeless because the accommodation they have is not reasonable to continue to occupy. And that's something that the respondents flag up in their submissions. That, we suggest, may be a slightly exaggerated fear because not everyone will immediately then apply as homeless, but it does mean that the what will have to be confronted is that the present arrangements do have that wide impact. And it's something that, in particular, the Child Poverty Action Group have long been concerned about, as Ms Garnum points out in paragraph sixty-two to three of her statement. And if it's thought that people ought routinely to pay more than their applicable amount towards rent, then that's a matter which which will ultimately have to be confronted by central government. And in doing so, they have to recognise the scale of the issue and the social costs of doing so. But the consequence of exceeding to the appellant's case and the submissions put by the intervenors is to indeed have the effect that that does have to be confronted, the consequence of not exceeding to it is to create a situation where, or to perpetuate a state of affairs, where those on benefits are going to be forced without limit of time to cut back on essential expenditure in order to maintain a roof over their heads and thereby forego any acceptable standard of living to their detriment and that of their children. So it's against that background that I come on to to address the points I'll be dealing with. I'm going to deal first of all with
Mr Westgate, the way you're putting it is obviously quite a the consequences of this decision are quite far-reaching potentially for central government.
Well, the
I just wonder, has there been any discussion between your organisations and government about how how this would impact and how
Well, it's it's been something that has been raised as Ms Garnum makes clear in her statement that it's something that has been raised by the Child Poverty Action Group in response to changes and in benefit policy.
Yeah.
The 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 far-reaching effect is one that arises because if the the general proposition is accepted, that once you go below the subsistence level, then the the current position is that in the private rented sector, it is difficult to find accommodation below that level. It's not impossible, but it is difficult. And that's that's something where there's that there's been the kind of discussion one would have expected. But I I'm not able to point to particular details about that in
No, you're saying we are not, no, I mean, the department hasn't intervened in these proceedings.
No, they haven't, and I don't like it, I don't know what the the position is there, but they haven't intervened to discuss either the consequences or the or the meaning of the guidance.
Thank you.
But the what we say is the fact that the benefit rates have had the effect that they currently have isn't something that undermines the the principles that the appellant's rest on and the the bases on which subsistence benefits are rewarded. But it's you'd be wrong to to say that this is a case that doesn't have wider implications and that then certainly the respondents urge that on you as a reason for taking the opposite approach. But if I can deal first of all with the subsistence benefits, then I can deal very briefly with the guidance, I don't think I need to say a great deal about that. And then come on to make some observations about existing practice and why we say that favours the the arguments that are being put forward by the appellant's, and then then say a little bit about children.
All in twenty minutes?
Yes, if I can deal first of all with the idea of subsistence benefits. The starting point here is that we say it's a meaningful position to say that there are subsistence benefits set at a level that Parliament considers necessary to meet daily living needs. And a proper appreciation of housing benefit changes demonstrates that those were not intended to have the effect that subsistence benefits be used to pay for the rent. Now, the respondents seem to deny both of those propositions, and indeed, they seem to suggest that because setting benefits is a multifactorial exercise and because Parliament has, that that one can't define what the object of subsistence benefits is. They also suggest that because Parliament's been aware of the shortfall between housing benefit and subsistence benefits, then they've endorsed the idea that subsistence benefits should be used to pay rent, but neither of those propositions is correct, we suggest. Firstly, as to the object of benefits, it's right to say that the precise figure and the way in which benefit levels are set from time to time is or the rationale behind that may reflect a balance of factors such as affordability, groups to target, a particular support, work incentives, and so on. And that's dealt with by Ms Garnum in paragraph thirty-five of her statement, MS four eight four to five. Ultimately, there's a judgment about what amount ought to be provided to meet a claimant's need, and from time to time Parliament may decide that that figure should be higher or lower. But it's wrong to to reason from that to the idea that there's nothing can be said about the object of the amount set. The underlying idea is clear that it's a value judgment about the amount needed to maintain a minimal reasonable standard of living, again, for that we refer to Ms Garnum, paragraph thirty-eight. And we say that support is gained for that, and much of this ground's been covered by the appellant, so I can I can deal with it briefly. From the consistent description of such benefits as being at subsistence level or similar terms, and the appellant's taken you to a number of those, and we've set out a number of other references in our skeleton, paragraph nine, which I I won't take you to or repeat. That doesn't mean mere basic physical subsistence, but it includes other modest but nonetheless reasonable expenditure or living expenses. And in Humphries, which is tab twenty-four, MS one two seven one, and you were taken to it, Lady Hale described the government objective of child tax creation in that case as being targeted to reduce child poverty, that's a passage you were shown. But paragraph twenty-five goes on to say that it meets everyday expenditure for the child and most of the capital expenditure on things such as clothes, shoes, sporting and leisure equipment, school trips and the like. So it covers a range of payments that are necessary to secure the child's welfare and development. We also rely on the standard form of letter that gets sent to benefit claimants, which still refers as it has done for many years, to the amount being what the law says you need to live on. And there's an example of such a letter exhibited in Ms Garnum's statement of five oh five to six. And finally, we rely on policy documents, again, that they're referred to in our case at paragraph eight and in the interest of time, I won't take you to them. But the latest document, the document relied on by the respondents dealing with universal credit and entitled welfare that works is at MS one seven oh one and one seven oh four, and it describes the the basic amount there as being to meet daily living expenses or daily living costs and that the expenses needed to bring up a child. So the the aim of the subsistence element, can't we suggest be in doubt and is confirmed by by a number of sources? As to the amount itself, whatever state can be made about the object of it, those who do rely on it need it for their their daily living expenses, but the the measure is far from a generous one. Ms Garnum, again, draws a comparison with the minimum income standard, which is an amount assessed by the amount needed by households with and without children for a minimal acceptable standard of living. And in the the unison case concerning employment tribunal fees, it was described as going below that would require the pays there to go below ordinary and reasonable expenditure. So quite apart from the fact that the the policy statements about subsistence benefits indicate their the purpose for which they're set, one also has a another benchmark of the minimum income standard which both confirms the the range of living costs within which it operates, but also demonstrates that it's significantly lower than what many people regard as being necessary for ordinary reasonable expenditure. So that's the first part of the proposition about what subsistence benefits mean. As regards housing benefit changes, Mr Stark has already dealt with much of that, and I I won't take up time repeating what he says, but again, the respondents point out that housing benefits never paid for the full rental cost of the property. That's true, we say, but irrelevant. The important point for present purposes is that housing benefit's been designed in such a way that accommodation is meant to be accessible through housing benefit. And so responses to arguments about reductions have always, in effect, been met by the response that recipients can move somewhere cheaper and not by the response, well, you should eat into other benefits to pay for your rent. And in none of the materials they point to has there been any suggestion that where occupiers find that housing benefit doesn't meet their rent, then they must use other benefits to maintain the home over their head. That's true, it is that the point's sometimes been presented as a choice. And if one looks at the local housing allowance documents cited by the respondents, at paragraph thirty-five of their case, the the choice was presented that you either stay where you are and meet the rental costs in some other way or that you move. But what the changes have never been directed towards doing is forcing someone into that choice. That even though they can't move somewhere else, they nonetheless have to ease into their benefits to remain where they are. And to similar effect is the passage cited in the intervenor's skeleton at paragraph twenty, and perhaps if I can take you to that because it is particularly instructive. It's the paragraph twenty of our skeleton, it is a convenient place to find it, which is at
One five nine.
Yes, and it refers to a passage made in the debates, and you'll find those debates at tab thirty-seven, MS one three six four, where the point was made that housing benefit didn't cover the full rent. And for the government, Lord Mackay said, the amendments relate to affordability, it would clearly be wrong to assume that someone cannot continue to occupy accommodation and therefore not be considered homeless if he can't meet the terms on which the tenancy was granted. An obvious case would be where he can no longer meet the rent himself, for example, as a result of change in the rent, and the rent charge is above the local reference rent for that type of property, with the result that housing benefit isn't necessarily payable in full. Now, if the respondent's case was right, then then the answer, though, would be to say, well, it it depends, they can pay from their other benefits. But here, what's being contemplated is the mere fact that the local reference rent doesn't cover the rent will be that that person can't then be found to be it's there referring to homeless, but it clearly means intentionally homeless. So that's a clear indication that the housing benefit changes weren't intended to make an inroad into the idea of subsistence benefits. So to read, well, the the point of contact between this and the nineteen ninety-six Act is the assessment of affordability required by the nineteen ninety-six Act and the suitability order. Because on the face of it, if Because on the face of it, if total income is less than rent plus reasonable living expenses, then the accommodation is unaffordable. And so the idea of reasonable expenditure or reasonable living expenses becomes key. And in determining subsistence benefits, Parliament has determined an amount needed to meet reasonable living expenses. And there's no reason for local authorities not to respect that judgment and to regard it as covering basic non-housing costs without a contribution to the housing costs element. And that argument is, we say, reinforced by the fact, and I'll come back to this when I look at variability between authorities, the relative lack of expertise among housing officers in making judgments of what someone's standard of living should be and the fact that those aren't judgments that appear to be contemplated by the nineteen ninety six act at all. And even if one doesn't reason from the purpose of subsistence benefits, we refer back to the evidence about their amount. These are far from generous sums. They're well below the minimum income standard. And that in itself is a very strong steer towards saying that they are the minimum amount that below which one shouldn't go. So that's the point I was going to make about subsistence. If I can deal with the guidance very briefly, I don't propose to say anything more about the construction of the guidance, that's dealt with in the documents. And I don't repeat the points made there. We do, in our written submissions, also take a point on discrimination. That it would either be discrimination against children or against women or single parents for the purposes of article eight taken with article fourteen. And in the latter case, potentially also under section twenty nine of the Equality Act. It can't be discrimination against children under the Equality Act because age for children under eighteen is excluded from that provision.
This is not an issue in the appeal.
It's not an issue in the appeal, but the reason I'm raising it is that the two thousand and six guidance has now been overtaken by the two thousand and eighteen guidance. And there are similar provisions in the two thousand and eighteen guidance. And so it's still material, we suggest, or helpful to make the observation that one of the reasons why the appellant's reading of the two thousand and six guidance is right is that any other result would produce what's clearly unjustifiable discrimination. And that unjustifiable discrimination would arise because the treatment of the adult claimant would be materially different from the treatment of the children in their households. In other words, the respondent's approach appears to be that if you're an adult presenting on your own, then the amount of your income support just attributable to you would be the benchmark, which would in effect then be treated as the gateway to unaffordability. Whereas if you're a child, then the assessment is at large. And there's absolutely no reason to distinguish between the two. The respondents then say, well, what are we to do? If the guidance is discriminatory in that way, we still have to follow it. To which the short answer is, no, you don't. You have your own obligation not to discriminate. And if the guidance directs you in a way that is discriminatory, then you can't shield behind it. That's all I propose to say about the guidance, given the time. But what I do say is that if either of the routes that have been identified by the appellant are correct, then the overall policy and legislative framework contemplates that the subsistence level is no greater than reasonable expenditure. Then there is at least a presumption that where residual income's less than subsistence level, then accommodation won't be affordable and it won't be reasonable to continue to occupy. We recognise that there may be some exceptions, for example, where the shortfall is temporary. But any departure's got to be justified. That then brings me on to varying practice among authorities. And if we're correct, most cases the assessment would be a simple one. But as Polly Neat explains in her statement, that there is very considerable variation. She deals with it in paragraph thirty six of her statement, MS five two one. Some authorities have policies, some don't, some have training, some don't. Some adopt what are in effect ready-made measures. In particular, one which is called the AHAS measure, which as she points out, is stripped down to very bare necessities. And this variability is a problem with this because it leads to a huge amount of local variation and subjectivity. the difficulty with that is that well, if I can bring together the various strands that we say and why this feeds into the adoption of the income support standard. The case developed has been that affordability ought to respect the evaluation already made by Parliament. But that's underpinned, we say, by practical reasons, which are firstly, that while decision-making in homelessness cases is obviously a matter for local decision-makers, the effect of differing affordability assessments makes varying judgments of a different character to that contemplated by the Housing Act nineteen ninety six. Because although that act entitles authorities to take account of the general circumstances prevailing in relation to housing, what it doesn't do is contemplate that decisions would be made that have wide varying impact as to what's a tolerable living standard apart from housing conditions. Those questions have to be addressed by Parliament. And secondly, housing officers may well not have specific training on those issues and can't make judgments about what should be an acceptable standard of living. And that's against a background where they're almost invariably doing so in one direction only, i.e. below the level of subsistence benefits. And indeed, the respondents seem to acknowledge a paragraph ninety two of their submissions, that it's undesirable for variations of those kinds to take place, although they give a different diagnosis for it. All those problems are avoided if the guidance has given its proper meaning or it's recognised that subsistence level benefits are just that and that an income at that level is incompatible with accommodation being affordable. Finally, if I can make a few observations about the impact on children. Whatever approach is taken, it's necessary to ensure that children's interests are properly considered. And the route to that is through the Children Act two thousand and four. The starting point there is the decision of this court in Zola Mezzo, which I, in the interest of time, I won't take you to, it's tab eight, MS seven five five, paragraphs twenty two and twenty five, which sets out a distinction between factual decisions and evaluations. And although the question whether something's deliberate is on the factual side of the question, whether something's affordable or reasonable to continue to occupy is clearly a matter of evaluation. And it follows that any decision about what's affordable needs to be strictly attentive to the impact that a reduction below subsistence level benefits will have on the children, if one can go into that territory at all. The developmental problems faced by children in poverty is well documented. That's Professor Bradshaw, that such children have poorer health, education and employment outcomes. And what we say, that there are really two points that follow from this. The first is that, given the low level of subsistence benefits and their purpose, where there's any substantial shortfall, then in practice, it's not possible for a decision-maker to be satisfied the reduced budget isn't incompatible with the child's welfare unless they can be satisfied how the savings ought to be made. So in other words, it's not going to be good enough for there to be a general statement of the kind that one has in this case, that you ought to be able to find another thirty four pounds a week, without identifying where that money would come from. Because a general statement simply assumes far too much that an assessment's been made that money would be found somewhere in the family budget, but without explaining how it impacts directly or indirectly on children. And so if you're going to reduce benefits below subsistence levels where children are in the family, you have to address and explain how it can be that that reduction can be done without prejudicing the child's welfare or promoting their welfare. That ought not to be an onerous task, we suggest, because it's the sort of thing that any budgeting exercise would be done by any debt adviser. The second point we make, and this is my last point about children, is that there's a positive aspect to taking account of the welfare of children. And that is that attention's got to be given to positive expenditure needed to promote their welfare. An inclusion of things like school trips, outings, sports clubs, sports equipment, presents, pocket money and so on. Now, there's evidence that some authorities cut back in such a way that things like that are missed. The AHAS guidance is muted on that topic. And in Farah, which is one of the cases in your bundle, swimming lessons were initially queried. But what we say is it's quite wrong, particularly given that what one's dealing with here is something that extends over an indefinite period of time, to regard those kind of things as being in some way optional. So whatever approach is taken, when one comes to consider reasons to depart from subsistence levels, if they are permitted at all, then decisions need to be much more attentive and reasoned when it comes to the welfare of children. Would you bear with one moment? Unless there is.
I'm reminded, your point that one needs some sort of national guidance to avoid a postcode lottery. It reminded me of what the case we had on Zambrano Carers HC.
Yes.
Where I think there, there's nothing in the act itself which requires the Secretary of State to provide guidance. But I think we all felt that it's necessary to be, since it was a national responsibility. I mean, does that provide any assistance in this?
Well, yes, we say that the same applies here, that this is a this is territory where it's simply not appropriate for varying decisions to be made among varying housing officers. It's one thing for housing officers to say, well, housing conditions mean this in this area or to take variable. But it's another thing to say, well, in this area, children have school outings, in this area, they don't.
And I mean, you'd say, no doubt, the mere fact, the fact that we've got in section one seven seven provision for the Secretary of State to make an order is designed to give him or her a national responsibility.
It's the, well, the power to give guidance is.
Well, the assumption is that the guidance will be given, which will be of some use in providing
No, exactly.
Some degree of consistency.
And one short answer is that the Secretary of State has given that guidance and that it makes a clear distinction between subsistence benefits and going above and beyond that. The thrust of our submissions has been that even if he didn't say that, then the principles of subsistence benefits would yield the same result. But certainly it's.
But I mean, the point is, if we do find him saying that, then that is consistent with what one would expect the purpose the order to be.
No, no, exactly, yes.
Right, sorry, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Westgate, thank you. Now it is your turn, Mr Manning.
We propose to deal with the issues in broadly the same order as my learned friend, Mr Stark, did. First of all, to address the issue as to whether something in the statutory scheme requires local authorities to adopt the approach that he puts forward. And included within that, we were, I'm not sure whether it's a separate point, but he makes a point about the way in which residual income ought to be calculated by reference to including all of the rent and all of the housing benefit, rather than excluding the rent and the housing benefit and dealing only with the shortfall. It may be that I can deal with that quite shortly, given that it hasn't been addressed orally by my learned friend. Then I will come on and make our submissions about the meaning of the guidance and its effect. And finally, I will address the issue about whether the decision in this case was made lawfully and whether or not it was properly reasoned. May I start, however, with two just very short preliminary points? The first is that obviously this is not a challenge to a general welfare scheme. And the respondent is not the government responsible for either the homelessness scheme or indeed the welfare benefit scheme. And we say the focus has to be on the scheme of part seven of the nineteen ninety six act, to which there is no challenge. Secondly, that what the authority decided was that the applicant's accommodation was affordable for the reasons it gave, not simply because her residual income was above what it understood to be and understands to be her income support applicable amount, which is referred to in the guidance. And respectfully, we submit that so far as the individual decision is concerned, the authority can't be criticised for not having raised the issues that are now raised in relation to the general scheme of benefits or indeed the meaning of the guidance in relation to applicable amounts, because none of those issues were actually raised before the authority when it made its decision. And indeed, there is no rationality challenge to that decision. The challenge is simply based on the proposition that, as we understand it, there is a general principle in welfare benefits law about income support, child tax credits and child benefit as subsistence benefits, that they are not available for use in relation to housing costs and cannot be considered so available. And that that general principle finds its way into the scheme of part seven in relation to dealing with homeless applicants via the guidance. And we submit respectfully that both of those propositions are wrong. So can I turn on then, please, to the question of issue one? And the proposition that there is a general principle in relation to housing benefit and welfare benefits generally that creates a complete separation between the two. And my learned friend, Mr Westgate, you see, makes the point that although levels of benefit may have been affected by government policy in such a way as to mean that in particular housing benefit no longer, if it ever did, cover all of housing costs, that can't be used as a basis for questioning the policy behind housing benefit and indeed the other benefits we've been discussing more generally. And we say that, and I'll come on to this in more detail in a moment, that it's wrong to look at welfare benefit policy as if it was set in stone throughout the ages. And that it's clear, from the way in which that policy has developed, that the bright line distinctions that my learned friend seek to draw are not properly made. So if I can turn to part seven itself and the scheme of the statute, and if I could ask you to turn to authorities, bundle one, if I can find it, at tab one. And we start, if I may, at section one seven seven on MS page six three nine. And we see that at section one seven seven two, the general proposition that in determining whether it would be or would have been reasonable for a person to continue to occupy accommodation, regard may be had to the general circumstances prevailing in relation to housing in the district of the local housing authority to whom he has applied for accommodation or assistance in obtaining accommodation. And in subsection three, the Secretary of State may by order specify other circumstances in which it is to be regarded as reasonable or not reasonable for a person to continue to occupy accommodation. B, other matters to be taken into account or disregarded in determining whether it would be or would have been reasonable for a person to continue to occupy accommodation. And that provision in relation to reasonableness to continue to occupy is mirrored in section two hundred and ten on page six six nine in relation to. 210 on page 669 in relation to suitability, save that by section 210 one, rather than an authority in relation to suitability being entitled to take into account the housing circumstances in its area, there is a specific list of matters to which the authority must have regard. But by subsection two, the Secretary of State may specify matters, circumstances in which accommodation is or is not to be regarded as suitable, and matters to be taken into account or disregarded in determining whether accommodation is suitable for a person. And we therefore submit that it's open to the Secretary of State, when he made his order, to have required local authorities to disregard certain matters which could have included what's been called subsistence level benefit income when deciding on affordability. And in one sense, if he had done that, it would have achieved the effect for which the applicants contend in a clearer, more straightforward way. If we turn then to the next tab, tab two on page 670, and my learned friend has taken, my lady and my lord, to article two of the suitability order. And we accept and indeed point out that the principal parts of article two require the authority, when determining whether it would have been reasonable for a person to continue to occupy accommodation, and whether accommodation is suitable, so it applies in both circumstances, to take into account whether or not the accommodation is affordable for that person. So this is an individual assessment that has to be carried out in respect of each individual applicant. And we've seen in the statement to facts and issues that my learned friend took the court to earlier, that details of income and expenditure were given to the authority, albeit that they changed over time. And obviously, it's already been pointed out that the matters of income that are to be taken into account in paragraph A, little one to nine, are matters to be taken into account in particular, and it's the financial resources available to that person that are to be taken into account. And by subparaphrase B, it's the costs of the accommodation that are to be taken into And in C, other payments that persons required to make, and that other person's reasonable living expenses. So on the face of it, we submit respectfully, that there is a clear requirement in the order itself to, like, put everything into the pot and then assess affordability on an individual basis. I'll make my submissions about the guidance separately, because otherwise it's going to get slightly confusing. The point that we make here is that there is nothing in either the statute or the order that makes any reference to subsistence or to subsistence benefits being treated any differently than anything else. This is a general individual assessment of affordability that is mandated by the order. And we respectfully submit that in carrying out that assessment, the applicant, either, well, it has to be, it has to be established by the applicant that in carrying out that assessment, either there is something in the scheme of part seven itself which has the effect that they contend for, or there is some other principle of law imported by part seven into the assessment that has to be taken into account. So the first point that I need to address is the suggestion that there is a general principle of welfare benefit law, that income support, child tax credits and/or child benefit, which are the only benefits that are being considered in this case, are simply altogether excluded when it comes to deciding whether or not it is possible to use them to meet housing costs, on the basis that the only benefit that is provided in relation to housing costs is housing benefit. And therefore, it's wrong in principle to suggest that any other benefit should be, in any circumstances really, expected to be put towards housing costs. And we say that's wrong, and the first reason we say that that's wrong is because of the nature of housing benefit itself. My learned friends have already adverted to this. Before I come on to that, my learned friend, Mr Westgate, is wrong respectfully to say that the impact of our argument is that anyone who is on subsistence benefits is therefore required to use those benefits to pay for their housing costs in terms of the affordability assessment. That's not the impact of what we're saying, because we are not suggesting that there is any bright line between what the Secretary of State says about applicable amounts and the overall affordability assessment. It may very well be, in a significant number of cases, that the overall affordability assessment would come to the conclusion that it's not appropriate for an individual to be expected to put other benefits towards housing costs. But that, we say, is an assessment to be carried out by the authority. But if I can come on to housing benefit itself, housing benefit has never met the full costs that are claimed or that are due under accommodation agreements. And that's not just because of the rules that have sought to limit benefit. For example, it's always been the case that housing benefit is not available to meet the vast majority of service charges, which may be due under the accommodation agreement. It doesn't meet water charges that may be due under the accommodation agreement. They may not technically be rent, but you can still be evicted if you don't pay them. And to that extent, therefore, they have to be considered housing costs. I don't need to take the court to it, but the original version of regulation ten of the Housing Benefit Regulations is in the authorities bundle at MS page 792 and 793, behind tab ten. And it's, it's that provision that originally eliminated those costs. So you might very well be in a situation where you are a benefit claimant, required by your tenancy agreement, even in the social sector, to pay water rates as a part of your obligations under the, under the agreement. But those will not be met by housing benefit, and as I said, nor would service charges. But I don't shy away from the proposition that quite apart from ineligible items, the system of housing benefits is such that it is quite clear that, at least since the mid nineties, the policy of housing benefit has been that it does not pay costs calculated on the basis of the actual rent that a person is obliged to pay. And we've set this out in our printed case, in particular paragraphs 23 and 24. MS, I'll probably take it quickly from there, MS page 121, 122. From 1995, there's no, I don't think there's any dispute about this, maximum rents were introduced whereby, as I've set out, we've set out at paragraph 24, the benefit was calculated not by reference to actual or recognizable rent, but by a series of notional charges determined by the rent officer. You've already heard my learned friend, Mr Westgate, when he took you to a quote from the parliamentary debates, referring to the local reference rent. The local reference rent was the average rent for a similar kind of property in the locality, that's 24 little two. And the amount of benefit you got was effectively the difference between the amount of rent that the event officer thought the landlord could reasonably obtain for that sort of property in the locality, or the lower of that amount and the local reference rent. So from that point onwards, if it was ever the case that housing benefit paid 100% of rent, it ceased to be the case. The introduction of local housing allowance made that position even plainer, and we've put in the, in the bundle at tab 39, which is MS 1648, the DWP White Paper, Building Choice and Responsibility: A Radical Agenda for Housing Benefits, from 2001, which set out the government's idea. And if I can just go to page 1666, paragraph six of the, of the, of the policy. Paragraph 6.1 refers to turning housing benefits from a system that simply pays rents into a means of empowering tenants and allowing them to exercise choice about where they live. 6.2, our aim, which we intend to work towards, is to base housing benefit payments on a system of standard local housing allowances graduated according to the size of household rather than the actual rent charged. Tenants would be able to choose their accommodation in the light of this allowance. If they found housing that was cheaper than the average for their area, they'd be able to keep some leftover benefit. If they wanted above-average accommodation, they would have to contribute to the cost from other income. So tenants who rent a property at below the standard local allowance, or who move to cheaper property in their local area, or who negotiate to keep the rent below the standard allowance, will be able to keep the difference, putting the decision in their hands. And then at 6.3, under the bullet point-headed choice, it talks about allowing tenants to trade between the quality and price of their accommodation, like other tenants. They would be able to choose between paying more, to stay in larger property, and increasing their after-housing costs income by moving to a smaller house. Increased landlord confidence in the system should widen the choice of property available. Now, that was at the time when local housing allowance, standard allowances were based on the median cost of accommodation in these broad rental market areas that my learned friends have described. We know that since then, we're now talking about the bottom 30% of the housing rental market, and according to the evidence that the interveners have produced, I think my learned friend said in 95% of areas, the, our housing benefit allowance does not meet even the 30th centile rents in those areas. Now, in our respectful submission, if it's quite plainly government policy, and has been since the mid nineties, that housing benefit contribute towards housing costs rather than meeting housing costs in full, it cannot be said, respectfully, that it is the policy of the welfare benefit system, that housing benefit is the only benefit available to meet housing costs, and everything else, because it is set at a subsistence rate without actually defining what is meant by subsistence, is simply unavailable to meet those costs. We respectfully submit that government must be taken to know, when setting housing benefit, that lots of people who obtain it are also required to live on out-of-work subsistence benefits. After all, an element of income support included some of the service charges that were excluded from housing benefit. And after all, my learned friends invite the court to infer that Parliament intended housing benefits to be the housing cost benefit, and all the others to be treated as not to be used for that purpose.
Do we know the proportion of housing benefit claimants who are what for the sake of argument we'll call subsistence benefits claimants, and the proportion who are not? Because of course, housing benefit is payable to a great many people who are in work and not claiming subsistence benefits.
Yes, they, yes, it is. I accept that. I don't have figures for that.
I'm not disagreeing with your, your point that government must have known that a proportion of housing benefit claimants were also claiming subsistence benefits. That stands to reason. But it would be interesting to know what the actual proportion is.
I don't know whether we would have access to that figure in relation to Birmingham, obviously, because, you know, we're not central government, we probably have no better access. But whether the interveners could help with that?
Well, they might, they might, yes.
What I would submit, however, is that the passporting element is quite important to this point, because the fact that income support claimants, subsistence benefit claimants are passported to 100% of, to maximum housing benefit demonstrates that government's fully aware of the link between the two. What it doesn't mean, being passported to a hun, to maximum housing benefit, doesn't mean that housing benefit meets 100% of housing costs. And we have referred to the case of the Chalpoff Action Group and the Secretary of State for Work and Pensions, which is at authorities bundle two B, tab 28, memory stick 1352. For the, one short passage in...
Is it in your written case?
Yes.
Well, just give us the paragraph number to your written case, because we're about to adjourn, and that'll be the handiest and quickest way to do it.
It is, well, it's, it's partly paragraph 22, and footnote 12. And I think it's somewhere else, but, but, but the point is that even in 1993, before maximum rents, the master of the rolls, Thomas Bingham, it's also paragraph 40, I'm sorry, but, but in the Gibson case, referred to the scheme being directed to mitigate the demand on public funds, where housing benefit recipients are paying above the level of market rental living and accommodation larger than reasonably necessary to meet their needs. And in paragraph 40, we've set out the quote, that was where, sorry, it was paragraph 40 where we set out the quote, which is where... sorry, it was paragraph 40, very difficult to quote, which is where Mr Justice Supperson made the point that the purpose of housing benefit scheme is to assist claimants with rent while also protecting the public purse.
Yes, well, ensuring that you don't automatically pay whatever the rent is.
Yes.
That's the protection, isn't it?
Well, that was...
Right, well, we will, we will adjourn now until two o'clock, Mr Manning.